So we will call the Woodbury Select Board meeting for Monday, September 25. To order, it is 6:02 PM. As Select Board Chair, I'm compelled to have the meeting be chaired by Diana Paduzzi, because I have a commitment in half an hour. So I have called me to order, but the Chair for the position for this meeting will be Diana Paduzzi.
Okay. Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda for anyone?
I do know.
We are working on the bills. They've been approved by two people, so if all those approved, I'll look at them later. The approval minutes from the September 11 meeting.
Have been approved.
All in favor. Okay. Any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda? Alrighty. So first, we have a presentation or a request or announcement from the Library Trustees.
Alright.
You're on.
Alright. I don't know if everybody's seen our bright and beautiful announcements, but anybody who'd like one. We are holding an event. It's a... Just for the community strengthening. Oh, I didn't bring enough. You can share.
Yep, we can share.
Alright, okay. So it's October 4th, and the library is sponsoring... All the legislators are coming. And it really grows out of, you know, we usually only see them at town meeting, as a lot of folks feel, and so we wanted to have another opportunity to have them all here with us. So they're all coming just for us, so I hope we'll be there. Because they're gonna... What we're doing, we're putting together a little bunch of volunteers. We're all cooking for you. And we're gonna have food. And we're going to have it in the gym. And they'll be arriving. Everybody arrives around 5:00. We'll have a little supper, light supper. And Mark's making a lot of rolls in the outdoor oven, so hang on. And there's gluten-free vegetarian things by significant others.
Oh, he's making rolls?
Baker, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Maybe the word isn't out, but I'm really good. So anyway, we'll have a little light supper, then we'll have about an hour. Steven's gonna moderate a question.
Stephen Murphy is gonna moderate?
Yeah, he's gonna moderate a question-answer with the legislators. So that's our plan. And we recognize people are coming off work, you know, they need to eat, they probably have their kids. We weren't able to create a kids program, but we're welcoming the children.
That'll be wonderful.
That'll be wonderful, and we'll have things ready in the back.
Wonderful.
So that's the plan.
Alright.
So please spread the word, and whoever can come, please, please come.
That's a nice idea.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
If you need that information, I can post it on the website.
Awesome.
Do you want this? I've already seen it. Thank you.
If you have a digital image of this, you can post that.
Okay, so this is nice, because a lot of times people complain that they never hear from our legislators except during an election year. And they do wanna hear what people are concerned with, and they wanna tell us about what things are gonna be going on in the upcoming session.
It's a real opportunity, and to get them all is pretty exciting, so I really hope we can turn out for them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any information that you want posted on the website?
It would be nice if we could give them a tour of the village, just to see what happens.
Maybe it'll still be light when they break up. I don't know. Okay, so there we go. Town clerk's report.
I have a election training this morning Friday up at Burke. They are doing new machines that we all have to be educated on.
They gonna take the old ones back, or are they gonna have to leave them?
I will find that out on Friday. And it's gonna be both of the machines that we use, the one for the... What's the proper word I wanna use?
Handicapped accessibility?
Yeah.
The one that nobody ever uses?
Yep.
Okay.
They're gonna redo that one, and it sounds like the new feeder one that everybody puts a ballot in. That's gonna be a different trainer training later on.
Wow.
So they're getting us geared up already for 2024.
Well, good. I'm glad we're planning ahead.
Yes.
That's the best thing I can possibly do.
And we received a call at home one day last week about a barking dog that had been barking for three days. It's a recurring problem. And this person says, "I'm just gonna go down, unhook it, and take it to the main society."
No.
They won't think they'll take it.
They won't.
They'll take it if we had a dog warden to bring it in, but they won't take a stray, especially if it's not even a stray.
No, it was hooked at this house.
Yeah.
Did they say where? Was it the same one? Because there was a complaint last meeting, I think Tebbets Road?
Tebbets Road.
Same?
Yes.
Same house?
Yes. So do we still have?
I don't know specifically the house.
We don't know.
Okay.
Do we still have the authority to house at Kim Silk's boarding, even though he's not the dog catcher?
If we had someone who was like our acting dog catcher, like our constable or something, Kim would probably allow a dog to be kept up there.
Is the dog registered? Or do we not know?
I'm leaning towards no, but I won't say that 100%.
Could we confirm it on the list? Like, do you know specifically who listed it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll check tomorrow when I get to the office.
And then let us know, and then we can act on it.
Yeah. Okay.
With a temporary housing.
And we have sent out the challenge letters for the voting list. Haven't started getting any back yet. Hopefully in the next couple of days, we'll get the checklist cleaned out. And recordings are coming in steadily. And I think that's... Oh, and this... Ron asked me to bring in this abatement for taxes for two town properties. One is the old bachelor property, the swamp... Swamp. The Cranberry Meadow.
Yeah, why don't you pass that over, so we can see?
And then the other one is the old store.
Okay, thank you.
That was taken down.
Right.
So the letter says, "We do need to act on this," I think, for Brandy.
We do have to act on it.
There are two new town parcels, well, town parcels that need to be voted on in the 2024 town meeting in order to be non-taxable. These parcels are 09-01, the former bachelor property, which is the Cranberry Meadow, and 14.72, the former store site, our buyout. For this year, the Select Board just needs to give permission to the town treasurer to go ahead and abate the 2023 taxes. The taxes on parcel 0901, the Cranberry Meadow, are $255.77, and the taxes on 14.72 are $312.08. Please put the approval in writing to the town treasurer, so that we have documentation. Thank you, Ron Wells, Lister Chair. So tax bills would have been sent to the town?
No, they're still... Well, the reason why they're not sent to the town is because they're still in... They're still in...
They're being sent to the owners?
Period of review.
Right, because your Cranberry Meadow one didn't happen until August 1st.
Yeah, that was... But the other one, I thought we got rid of that last year. No?
The listeners haven't changed it in the system.
It hasn't changed either.
Okay, but the...
So we abated them last year.
Yeah, okay.
Until they catch it next year.
So this is something that the listers need to put bigs in there. Okay. So I thought they did that store one last year. Okay, so...
So does that mean we have to have articles for town meeting to do that?
Yes.
We have, because of the 10-year... 10-year or 8-years?
8 years.
8 years. It does need to be on the warning this year that the town votes to abate all town properties, including the fire department, that they're not taxable.
Oh, so that's just a blanket thing that has to happen every few years?
Every 8 years, we have to do that. At-town meeting. Cannot do it otherwise.
Okay, so somebody wanna make a motion to abate these two taxes for this year?
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement of those taxes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Ron in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So I'll send you something, or the minutes. Do you want something separate? A letter, or memo, or something saying that the board voted on it?
We need to have a letter.
Yeah, alright.
If you don't wanna write it, I will.
Oh, I can do that.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think that was on here, wasn't it? Okay.
Do we all have to sign it?
Not till we have a letter.
It says the minutes will be...
And I was not able to get a quote from Jeff Perry for the basement at the town office. I have it whatever.
Still?
Right, while his uncle passed away. So that...
Uh-huh, I put him behind, huh?
Yes.
Okay. So that stuff you sent around today, Brandy, that was kinda confusing, but...
Well, I just wanted to keep everybody in the loop. The fire department does share insurance with the town.
Yeah.
That was a claim that the fire department put in for the new piece. If we want to... Are you all set?
Yes.
But they haven't...
What we do have on... Excuse me.
So the report I've...
What we do have on the agenda, the elevator?
That too. Let me finish up real quick with the VLCT. It's still in review. There's no update for us.
So, okay, but they have looked at the building. They have looked at the basement. Yeah, okay.
It's been reviewed. It's been reviewed.
But, yeah, they're backed up because of FEMA, so...
Oh, yeah.
Elevator.
Elevator, please. So it sounds like...
I was kinda through with it. Ooh, Skip Lindsey.
Mr. Lindsey, please.
Just a quick question. How soon do you expect that review to be completed? Because if they deny your insurance and you wanna submit a FEMA inventory, damage inventory, that has to be completed by November 2nd.
That's right.
It's just, there's some urgency with that date.
I will keep writing them. I will keep bouncing emails, including the Select Board at the end.
We had a date for the 24th. And we had a date for the October 24th, and then they pushed it back.
Back, back.
To the date that you're... To the November date.
Oh, she was incorrect, the program manager.
Yes, ma'am.
She was incorrect.
Oh.
When she sent that out.
So is the November date actually the date?
That's correct, yeah.
That's the correct date?
Yeah. I sent her an email saying that, you know, we need the extra two weeks.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It's really November 2nd, because I got an email directly from FEMA and not from Michelle saying that you have until November 2nd.
Okay. It's still a short period of time. We got a month, basically.
Alright, so I'll keep up there.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
And I can send them a letter stating the urgency, because if we don't get it in, I could ask for an extension, but that's just more paperwork.
I'd rather not do the extension if we can just act on it.
I would not rather. I would rather not.
I would tend to agree. If we can act on it, we should act on it.
So you said November 7th is the last?
Second, November 2.
So we need to have an answer from VLCT.
Two weeks prior to that.
Two weeks prior. So isn't everybody in the same boat? I mean, all the towns in the same boat?
No, 60 days after their project scoping meeting.
Right.
Uh-huh, oh, okay.
And we already had ours.
And the fire department has it next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Scoping meeting.
That's right.
So there are two claims in, two from the fire department and one from us, so... Just a heads up. And Susan Rowell is our contact for this case.
Do they have the ability to separate the claims?
They have, each have their own claim number.
They're unique identifiers, as we have it right now. They're unique identifiers. Which I think is a good thing.
It's a really good thing.
So, I don't either.
Elevator.
Sounds like...
So I wasn't too impressed with the invoices?
Not terribly impressed.
You guys have asked for it?
No, 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 no.
No, we just were looking for replacement parts, which basically are not available.
No, no.
Right, so it sounds like in order to actually be in compliance...
To have a fully running, inspectable elevator, the state is gonna look at me in November and go...
No chance.
So you have to stand in there, wait 10 seconds, flip the lever, and then flick it back, wait another five seconds, and then you push the button, and it sometimes goes and sometimes doesn't go.
Sounds like...
But our inspection from the state is up from the beginning of November, so...
Beginning of November, you said?
Yeah.
The start of November.
So that can't just be handled in the meantime by a sign? I mean, I always thought it was kinda confusing, because there was no sign that tells people that they have to push the button and hold it.
Oh, well, no, that doesn't exist anymore, so...
There's a lot more to it.
Oh, I realize that, but if it is possible to do it with the five seconds here in the meantime, better than having nothing.
You know, one of the things that they have to do is throw a breaker. And if somebody's in a wheelchair, there's a good chance they can't reach up and reach that breaker.
It would have to be one of us assisting in that, unless we're... Yeah.
So that would be another sign that, you know, people can...
Sounds like, to make it accessible, we need an elevator.
Yes.
To make it legal.
To make it legal. I mean, aside from the really straightforward fact that we should have an accessible town office, we also need to be in compliance, which we are not.
Correct.
So it seems like we should go out for bids.
Am I understanding correctly that we can't... The one that we have is not fixable, so we would need a whole new elevator?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible, possibly cheaper, to build a ramp? Like, does the base... I don't even know where the elevator goes, but people just need to get to the upstairs, right? Not the downstairs?
Correct.
Would that be potentially a cheaper... I mean, I'm thinking that elevator is probably really expensive.
That's up to the board.
These are all options.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've had an elevator for a reason. In some cases, it's for moving big things. And we've taken advantage of it.
We built a ramp.
The ramp would have to kick...
Then we'll have to have a roof over it.
The ramp would have to kick out onto the right-hand side.
Right-hand side moving?
Yeah, that's right.
And that's where the septic...
That's where the septic is. And we would have to cover it. It'd have to be a covered structure. We can get quotes for lots of different options.
He's supposed to be getting me a quote, and then I can go from there as far as going out for bid.
I think that we have to start with the replacement, because we already have the roof structure.
Get a quote, the guys that are working on it now?
Correct.
Do they do installations?
Yes, yes.
And what's their name?
Access Mobility.
Thank you.
Out of Burlington.
Out of Burlington, yeah.
Do they have that timeframe on when they're gonna have you a quote? Probably not.
No, I'm gonna have to bug.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, it'll be more than $8,000.
But a ramp is an option.
I don't know.
Maybe if we see the quote, we could just think about it.
We can work on it from there, except we know that we're gonna be out of compliance.
Till then.
Until then.
Yeah, we need to...
And that's unfortunate for us, but...
What kind of position does that put us in? I mean, is it...
Potentially fined, assuming.
We will be fined.
Even though we can say we are working towards this, we are getting quotes?
Doesn't matter.
Every public place has to have a...
Has to have this...
It would pass inspection.
We won't, yeah.
Getting the breaker off and on.
Yes, so we will be fined, and we'll be fined on a regular basis until we find a solution.
Okay.
Unless we have a contract solution, but we will be fined continuously. Gentlemen, please, I know that you like talking amongst yourselves, but share it with a group.
Sharing secrets.
You know, do you guys want some gum or something?
Do we have some?
I'm just wondering, is there a difference between the ADA compliance statute if you do an elevator as opposed to a ramp?
Yes, there are three different criteria. The ramp, if we were to do a ramp, it has to be able to have a specific orientation and grade, and it has to have a specific turn angle, which we do allow, based on the really simple estimates that I've done on the property space that we have. We would have to do two turns to make it up to level. We have enough space at the top. It can work. But it's really not ideal, especially since we have an elevator structure that's already established. If we can replace that, that would make the most sense. If it's not cost-effective, then we have to think of other options. But we don't really know what those options are, because we don't have any quotes yet. So, Mr. Lindsey, I completely agree. We have to think about all those different variables. But in this case, the first step would probably see if we can actually replace the elevator system. The footprint is there.
Makes sense.
Let's try that first. Otherwise, a ramp structure is the next best bet, and probably, long-term, more cost-effective. But we just don't really have the numbers.
What about those lift things that go on railings? Do you guys know what I'm talking about?
Lift chairs?
Yeah. I'm just curious if, like, I know we should probably see the quote before we consider any other options.
You know, I have never pursued those, so I don't... If you wanna take a look, that'd be great.
Is there anybody in town that works for...
I don't think they allow stair chairs.
What?
If they're not stair chair, I don't think that's allowed for... They don't allow that for...
There must be a reason why the Select Board decided to do an elevator in the first place.
It was before my time.
20 years ago or whatever it was.
Before my time.
No, it wasn't before my time, before...
So we don't have anyone who can speak to that directly.
But there might be somebody in town if, you know, anybody can think of anyone.
Michael, do you know anybody who might have?
I don't.
Okay, so we don't really have a direct answer for that, unfortunately. Our best bet is to get the quote. And then, if that quote is admissible, see what the quote is to build a ramp system, and then we can approach other options after that. The footprint is not ideal for a ramp system, but if we can't afford the elevator replacement, then we have to move on to the next steps.
Yeah, I can't believe that a ramp is even legal. I mean, somebody who can hardly walk is not gonna have a good time walking up a long ramp.
Well, we'll have to address, and I'm sorry, it's been a cursory attempt on my part to look at the ADA requirements.
Okay.
I've done my best, but the elevator is obviously ideal.
Right.
It works when it works. It doesn't work right now. Obviously, we have to address it. The ramp would be kind of a triage option at best. It's not a permanent text. There are ways to do this, but I think that we have to start with, can we fix the elevator? That's my request. But if you all wanna chime in, I will...
I think that makes all the sense in the world.
We've invested quite a bit in this, so let's see if we can make that work first. Ms. Brandy, that...
Moving on.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Income over the last two weeks. Cash receipts took in $258,279.57, breaking it down to property taxes, delinquencies, library donations, fundraisers, recording, vault, fees, zoning, etc. State Vermont transfers, $101.50 for traffic fines. VHFA paid property taxes, delinquencies, $6,087.90. Payroll, $10,715.10. AP, $50,438.73. I transferred $355,000 over to the money market from the checking. So as we continue with the FEMA account, currently, we are at -78,816.12.
Can you repeat that, miss? 78?
Also...
So that's the money that we've spent on rubber pairs and that's all?
As well, the highway.
There was a... There might have been a sniffle in there, but... Sorry, Ms. Brandy. Please continue.
Also, the highway is -72,090.40. Yes, Miss...
Does that include labor?
What's that? FEMA?
Yeah.
No, it does not. It does not consider payroll.
Oh, okay.
It's materials only.
Payroll, correct.
So payroll is...
Would be another chunk.
And the equipment rental and...
That's all, that's in FEMA.
That's in with the $78,000?
Yes.
But is that all flood?
FEMA?
Yes, FEMA, but the $78,000, is that all flood repairs?
That is all on materials.
Before the flood, we were 30-something in the red, correct?
That was...
For the highway or for FEMA?
For highway.
So highway is different from FEMA, so now what do you... So payroll is included in the highway, so that's stuff that had it done. But, yeah, there's no income coming in yet.
Well, you told us that at the beginning of the fiscal year, there was that negative. I think that's maybe what you're talking about.
Both highway have been, yeah, they're negative.
And we increased the taxes to cover that.
In fact, right.
Right, but the 78 is the total that the highway was...
No, you had a different 70 number for the highway.
72.
Is FEMA.
So it's 72, 09, 0?
40 cents.
And 40 cents.
And that includes the 30, that whatever we were in the negative before. That's the total of everything.
And so taxes come in, and I do my transfer to pay off. That goes, what we approved, to the highway. It's gonna be negative. I mean, we'll get our state class 2 and 3 roads, which is $18,000 that goes to the highway, but nothing else is gonna go until I'm done paying the school. They're $1.3 million. Then I will do my transfers to pay the highway, to get you out of the hole.
So this $78,000 will change?
$78,000 is FEMA, so it'll keep going in the hole, because we don't budget for it.
Which is different than your highway.
Until we get reimbursed from it.
Correct, correct, and we'll still, I'm sure, have to pay a portion. We're still...
We won't get all of it.
Correct.
Right.
At least 75%, possibly 90%, right?
90 at best. That'd be kind of a... 90 at best.
So we're... So FEMA, accounting payroll, that'll bring the highway up. There's different things, but until then, it's gonna be in the negative.
We're gonna stay in the red.
Other things. So money is coming in super good, which is super great, right? We don't have to go off the road, or on the credit. Other questions? So this week, I'm going out for fuel bids.
Great.
Um, for all three locations, the garage, the town hall, and the town office. Um, I will send the RFP around to you guys and tag you in it. I send it to five fuel companies. And then you guys get to make the decision of who we're, we're gonna go with.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Ms. Brandy? Okay. I'm technically not chairing this meeting, so.
Okay, so I mean, do you have to go?
I do.
Okay, good. Okay, so we did sign the right of entry for V Trans Culver project. Um, we needed to give them permission to put their temporary road over our little crafty park, our messed up park, and they're gonna put everything back nice when they're done.
Wait, when do we sign up?
It's a very nice park.
What?
When do we sign up?
You just signed it.
I signed some minutes.
Hmm?
I don't, I don't think I signed it.
No, you didn't sign it, just the chairman had to sign it, but since Chris was gonna leave, I just had him sign it.
Gotcha. I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure I didn't sign it, but.
And we also, he also signed the amendment to the State of Vermont Grant Agreement, FY twenty-three grants and aid, an extension to for another year. And.
I don't think we had a choice.
Hmm, it's just an extension.
It's an extension.
The work time would have ended on September thirty.
Right. So I don't think we really have an option.
Yeah.
So I felt compelled to sign that.
Yeah. I was, I had a copy and was going to compel you to sign it.
Okay, well, so you didn't have to do that. All right, um, so.
Okay.
Now we have a whole nother year.
The meeting is turned over to Lizzie Higgins and Diana.
So I just put a, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
So I put on here that just a little status of the Route fourteen Culver replacement. I'm told that they hope to put the project out to bid at the end of this week. And then they have to wait at least seven days, you know, I mean, he still thinks it's gonna happen middle of October, but we'll see.
So is transportation putting the advertisement out or?
Yeah, oh, no, they are. It's all their project, yeah.
So I don't, I didn't realize it hadn't gone out to bid yet.
Right, I didn't know. It's been on a fast track, but I think they have a lot of little things that had to be cleaned up. They had to get a right of entry from the fire department. They had to negotiate the agreement with the fire department for the sewage disposal and things like that. They got our right of entry now, they'll get that tomorrow. So then we could talk about the local hazardous, hazard mitigation plan. Uh, an update is due early in twenty-four. Michael, you wanna tell us what that's about?
So, um, the local hazard mitigation plan, um, is, would be due to be revised and, and re-approved, um, in February of two thousand twenty-four. And with the flooding, I just kind of put a question in my head about the hazard mitigation plan, so, um, that's when I discovered that it does need to be revised. So I, I had some calls in to people, um. We are on a list, um, to get financial support from FEMA for, um, putting together a new revised, um, plan. FEMA right now hasn't awarded the amount of money that's kind of sitting on their money because of all of the nationwide disasters that they've been dealing with, including Vermont and Woodbury.
So that would come directly from FEMA and not through regional planning or?
Well, it, um, it would come, yeah, directly from FEMA to the town. Um, I don't know what the amount will be, um. And they don't know yet either, so they're kind of waiting on that. But they did have Woodbury on the list, knowing, this is the Vermont Emergency Management Department. They have Woodbury on the list to receive funds.
Okay.
Um, knowing that the plan was, um, due to be revised. The last two plans in two thousand thirteen and two thousand eighteen both received, um, support money, um, for the, and, and both times we contracted with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission for assistance.
So the plan that I looked at briefly, I don't think I have it printed out, but, um, do you think it needs much? I mean, you guys, it looks like you guys did a really good job five years ago.
Yeah, I don't think it needs much. It definitely needs to be re-looked at. There can be different situations, um. And it is, it is a fairly elaborate process, similar to a town plan, where there are hearings, um. When we did it in two thousand eighteen, um, there were, it was a survey that went out to kind of determine what people in town felt were local hazards or local shortcomings in, in an emergency, um. And then there are other goals that are set. There are different public hearings, um. One, we worked on it in two thousand eighteen, um, just basically Skip and I that did most of the work on that and mostly Skip, um, with the Regional Planning Commission, um. So we didn't really have an emergency management director or a functioning planning commission at, at that point in time. Um, Skip and I did it as select board members, um. And it doesn't have to be the select board or the planning commission, or it can be a committee of people, which is what we had in two thousand eighteen. I believe that was pretty much true in two thousand thirteen also. So we can form a group, um, however we wish. Um, I did talk to the planning commission about this last week and, um, at least one member is interested and willing to work on it, and I am myself, um. Just because we know the select board is pretty well buried in, uh, debris from the flood, so, um, uh, and then we'll see who else, um, might wanna help out with it. I, I've contacted, um, a member, a rep, or a person at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, um. So they're, they were aware of it already. Also, I contacted Stephanie Smith, who was our contact person, um, in two thousand eighteen, um, for funding and other supports, if she's part of the Vermont Emergency Management Department, um. So, and the reason that this plan is important, I mean, we put the plan together. I don't think anyone has looked at it since it was approved by FEMA. It gets approved by FEMA, not by, it has to be approved by the select board, by the town. And it's basically a document to give the town funding for emergencies or like the flooding that happened. The FEMA money that we're getting, the town would be able to get money regardless if, if they had a local hazard mitigation plan, but um, FEMA automatically gives, uh, town seventy-five percent. And then there's a twenty-five percent match that the town is responsible for. The state, um, Emergency Management Department helps with that other twenty-five percent. So if you have a local emergency operations plan in place, a local hazard mitigation plan in place, you've signed on to the state's, um, bridge and road standards, um, and if you are part of the, um, it's called a national insurance flood something or other, um, which, um, all of those things the town has in place, uh, we get twelve and a half percent from the state to cover our twenty-five percent. Uh, there's another, a new category where if there's, um, zoning bylaws that address river corridors, um, which the town hasn't done, and I don't know if it would even, I don't know anything about it, but that would give us another five percent or seventeen point five percent. The state would pay us. So it pays for us to have this thing in place, um. There's no penalty if we don't. And if we have started the process and February of two thousand twenty-four comes along, as long as we have a, an initial draft into the Vermont Emergency Management Department, we're still good, um, in the eyes of FEMA. So, um, obviously we need to get this started, um, and, uh, see what we've come up with. But I think, you know, with the two thousand eighteen draft, it was very thorough, um. And I don't think there's a lot that we will need to change on, but we need to at least look at it and figure that out. So I'm willing to, to, to be on that committee. Uh, Jim Spiehleman on the planning commission is also willing to be on it. And maybe we'll just put out word, um, from some of our other local officials, somebody from the fire department, um, who are maybe our emergency management director, um.
Yeah, I don't know. How does that work with the, the whole other emergency management planning? Is this something?
Well, it could.
Parallel or?
Yeah, we think it would parallel, yeah.
What, kind of overlapping or redundant?
I'm sure it would be overlapping too, yeah, yeah.
I think it should be one process.
Huh?
Should be one process.
It could be one process?
Should be.
Should be.
Sure, yeah. The same people should be involved in both.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, makes sense.
And it should be a, a strong document. Uh, I looked at the last one and I think that it needs a lot of work in terms of, uh, strengthening it and putting us in a better position, because it's always, if you're applying for money places, it's always good to be able to quote a document like that. But even if it's required or not, and have it be, whether it's strong, more strongly in terms of the work that needs to happen, because there is a lot of work that needs to happen.
On the plan, you mean? A lot of work that needs to happen on the plan?
Uh, you know, we're ready to make it resilient.
Oh, from on the ground.
One of the shortcomings of the last rendition of the this local hazard mitigation plan is that the town really didn't do any of the, it's like a town plan, there are rules, things to be done. Um, and really, I don't, you know, I was on the select board for a good number of years, so I'm as much fault as this. The select board should sort of be revealing it once a year, saying, okay, we did this, check that off. But basically the plan never got looked at after it was approved. So that's part of the work that I don't, that I assume Norman is looking to, but there's probably other things in the document or not in the document that should be included.
So, are you working on a plan, Norm? Some kind of a plan?
We'll get to my section in a little bit.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I just don't see how these.
But yeah, there's overlap and all this stuff. I, you know, the, um, um, I think we had a good example, uh, with this last storm.
Mm-hmm.
About, you know, the things that need to happen if we're gonna be able to do better in storms like that.
Hmm.
And now we know, or maybe before, you know, we didn't know that this would happen quite that, but now we can review all, all of what happened and figure out how we can better position ourselves to withstand that. And I think that with strengthened mitigation plan and so on, and from lessons learned and so forth, so sure, should be one process, uh. And, you know, I don't know that there's, yeah, I'm upset.
You were talking about getting together a committee.
Yeah.
And, and an emergency planning, emergency management committee, is that something that you think you can?
Do you want me to get to my section now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind, we'll get.
Well, if you're right now, it's related.
Yeah.
We continue the conversation.
Because, well, it's up to the chair that got an agenda.
Well, if you'd like to wait, we can wait. Mike, Michael, are you gonna stay?
I'll, I'll.
Good, okay, great. Okay. So the planning commission, at least a couple that were there at that meeting, they're interested in pursuing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so shall we skip over to Mr. Larabee? And hear what's going on with the roads?
Uh, well, it's still, still repairing from the flood. Uh, spent a few days hauling sand, winter sand.
Oh, did we get our truck?
Truck, no.
Our new truck?
We won't see a truck for months.
Really? I thought they were supposed to start making it like last month.
Uh, October first is when it's supposed to be built. And then it goes in the shop for the body and the hull.
Okay, all right.
So we're gonna, yeah.
You're okay for now with the, what's there for the winter?
Seems to be holding together. The one that that new truck is replacing is tired.
Yeah.
You know, we're kind of trying to limp it along.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, we won't, we won't see a truck for a few more months.
Oh, okay.
Um, so going on to the agenda. Uh, I did look at the rail trail.
Oh.
And that's a monster.
Hmm.
Um, it's, I'm estimating seventy feet deep from the trail floor bed down to the bottom. And when you gotta wash out like that or a mudslide like that, you have to start at the bottom.
Yeah.
And right at the bottom, there's a brook.
Hmm.
So you either gotta build a bridge to get across that brook, to get material there.
Hmm.
And looking at the, what's, what that bank consists of is little tiny chips of granite. And it's like ice when you're on, when an excavator, it just, there's nothing there. And so I see it being very dangerous and a lot of, a lot of work. So I'm gonna recommend we put it to bid. To see if we can get a contractor, one that has more time than we do. I mean, we're, we're a month and we're gonna be looking at snow.
Hmm.
So, and we still got a bunch more work to do outside of, of that. I would love to tackle it, but I just, with the time and, and the scope of work, I think it's a lot more than what the highway can do.
You think there's any possibility this FEMA might not be willing to jump in on that?
What do you mean by jumping in?
Pay. Have that be on their list of things that they'll support, Michael?
Is, is the rail trail a town responsibility? It's not a town road, is it?
It is a town, but we do have a lease and we signed a lease twenty years ago or so. And it does say that repairs will be the responsibility of the town. Now, who's gonna enforce that lease? I don't know, you know.
Well, that's a document that I sent to FEMA.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's a document, a document that compels the town to fix it.
Yeah.
So.
So they won't really have a choice to say?
Well, they always have a choice, but with the paperwork that I would submit, you know, you, number one, you would have to use the town purchasing policy and demonstrate that you've done that to select a vendor to do it, contractor to do it. And secondly, you know, for an emergency repair, I would have to get an estimated cost of the repair. Then I would submit a damage inventory. Then finally, when the final repair is done, I would submit a second damage inventory indicating that, that the, the damage is fully complete, you know, the remedy is fully complete and it's usable. So from what I read and talking with FEMA, they would consider paying for that, but the documentation is the key. So they do have our lease agreement with Swenson's. And I've highlighted that section that says the town is responsible to maintain it. So that's step number one. So all I need now is direction from the select board on which vendor are you gonna choose and an estimated cost. And I can move forward with submitting a damage inventory.
So who would write up the specs for a bid?
Not the FEMA point of contact.
Huh? No. Not the select board acting chair.
That's not on my staff. I would have no idea how to write anything like that. That's just. But there's, has been some work, you know, this gentleman, Peter Helgerson.
Yeah.
Has done a lot of work and he's identified a contractor who's willing and able to do the work.
Yeah.
So, and I've sent you guys all those email, the email strings, so that would, that would be my first stop would be to talk with Peter Helgerson. Contact his contractor. Um, move forward in whatever direction this select board sees necessary.
I can't really imagine any emergency repair. Because, you know, it's either gonna be done, so it's gonna have to be done in one.
Well, while I was there, I even looked into maybe moving the road, like up and around the, the washout or the slide.
Oh, yeah.
And it's all lech. I mean, it's like steep lech. I mean, it's like steep legs, just.
I mean, it's incredible how they built a railroad on there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there were no permits back then, I don't suppose.
Well, I think that's what, that's what that road is sitting on, is all these chips from the hardwood vanishes, right? Where they chipped it off and they lumped it out there and used it to go over.
Well, if you're gonna do a formal bid, you need some specs to work on, and have a center anywhere else can bid on it, but you have to have some specs, and they have to include the federal requirements and the bid specs and all that kind of thing, so.
Right. So that's an engineer.
Yeah, question is whether you need an engineer or not, or a civil engineer, whatever, to put that together. And I imagine that's FEMA eligible as an expense for a project like that. And also, I would guess that, also have to look at the rest of the trail, at least Woodbury section.
Right. So the rest of it, for the rest of it, I can fix. There's no problem with.
So that would go in with FEMA stuff.
Yes. It's just that really big wash that, or landslide that is.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the question, I guess for Skip maybe, is whether you're going to bid for a contractor, they should do the whole thing and just have one contract rather than have you do it. It's just a question for you, what makes more sense?
To make my life easier, for sure.
To make his life easier?
We have a, I mean, do we have to go to bid for an engineer to write us back?
Not usually. In federal stuff, you're, well, I'm familiar with a different venue, but you didn't have to bid engineers, or architects. You have to maybe get quotes and then select the one that was most appropriate, but I'm not the authority. I guess the public itself.
FEMA stresses the fact that you should follow your town's procurement policy. So in that sense, if it's over, what is it, $8,000, you have to go up to bid? If it's as simple as that.
Well, that's what our procurement policy said on the last, at the last meeting. Chris said that there's some other.
Yeah.
Me too, I don't know.
But this is gonna be well over that. I mean, it sounds like it's gonna be really.
But just for the engineering.
Oh, just engineering.
Yeah, the repair too.
Well, the repair's gonna be way over that.
So Skip, I did have a question about this. If we were to, you know, go through the process, get bids for it, is there some way to get a commitment from FEMA that they would pay before we actually hire a contractor to do it?
I could get a commitment.
Okay.
But you, I would, you still would have to go through the bidding process.
Right.
We'd have to demonstrate that we're going through a procurement policy.
Mm-hmm.
And I have a handout, I'll show you guys. And then what happens is you submit this damage inventory, and that goes directly to FEMA. And then FEMA looks at that and all the supporting documentation, including procurement policies, including bid specs, and the engineering and stuff like that, an estimated cost, and then FEMA would assign a project number. And once they assign a project number, that's like a green light.
Okay. So we could have a definite promise from them, basically, that there would be funding before we have someone do the work?
Partial.
Partial, 75%, right?
There's some lack work we have to do before.
Okay.
What you could do in the stipulation, you could also put some sort of caveat in there saying that, you know, this is all contingent upon FEMA funding.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in the short term.
Yeah.
Depends on how quickly you want to have it fixed.
Now, as steep as that bank is, is that something they can work on in the winter time?
They'll probably double the price in the winter time, because everything's harder in the winter time.
Right.
So again, we do have a November 2nd due date for these damage inventories.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, unless I write for an extension. So you gotta let me know soon.
But a damage inventory is an estimate of, it's not, not, not the bid process.
That's correct.
Getting an estimate of which you or someone could do is an estimate.
So the damage, I'm sorry, the damage inventory includes what?
I'll show you in a second.
Okay.
Oh, when do we get to your turn? Okay. Back to you.
Right, okay. So sorry to open that can of worms.
We have a can of worms to open.
Yeah.
Because of this urgency.
Yeah. So I really, you know, like I told you before, you tell us what's going on, and then you look at all these little things that I add on here. Some of which might, would be more important than others.
So next is the Old Poy Road.
When I went up there, after the week when you had done the work, and I saw your equipment sitting up at the top, I should have called you that day and asked you, could you just buzz through that other, those other two roads? But I didn't, so now it's probably gone.
It is gone. Well, there's, there's fence there. The people have fence there that prevents me from cutting any trees or clearing it out.
Really? Up at the top?
Yeah, up at the top. They've got this like really tall, black fence.
In the highway right of way?
Yeah, very much in the right of way.
It's like landscape fabric?
Yeah, that's, there's no, I mean, we can't work around that.
Can't just take it down?
Oh, we can take it down, sure. But I don't want to be shocked.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, now.
I don't know, I don't know. That's something that has to be dealt with though.
Okay.
We can't, we can't do anything with that until then.
Yeah, we have to somehow let those people know that.
I'd be willing to go talk to them. I did talk to a neighbor, I had a conversation with a neighbor.
Who was here, the one who was here last meeting?
Yeah. And he, I actually straight up asked if it would be safe for me to go and, you know, try to talk to him, and he didn't think that there would be a problem. So I'm willing to go and, it would be the second time I've tried to have a conversation.
But the man who lives up there is not the owner.
It's a woman, right?
Yeah.
Does she live up there?
Yes.
I think, yeah.
So around 6 o'clock is when she pulls in.
Okay. Do you know, oh, do we say names? We don't?
No.
Okay, never mind, ask you later.
His name is Lincoln, I don't remember his name.
Um, so if I were to go up and try to just talk to her, I would ask her if she can take down the fence and explain that we're trying to do road clearing? Are there other things I should bring up?
What they don't recognize is that those two roads on each side of their property are town roads.
Right.
With a 25, with a 50-foot right of way.
I could bring that up too, nicely.
Yeah, so and I could.
They were very well aware of that when Chuck removed the camper of the setbacks. It's just they have chose not to abide it, and nobody has stuck to the guidance of the town that there's setbacks. There's no parking lot.
You know, there's no, they haven't done anything that would require a zoning permit, except drive vehicles onto the property, so there's no, you know, but still, they have to be out of the right of way, which is 25 feet from the center line of the road.
If I were to go try to have a conversation between now and the next meeting, and then come back to you guys with the results of that conversation, do you think it would be helpful? What are you looking at for time wise to bring the equipment back up there?
Oh, I could, I mean, it's a fairly short job.
Right.
I would assume I'd bring the loader with the mower on it and just slash back the brush. Is that what you want? Is that what we're looking for?
Somehow to just, to make it clear that this is a town road and.
Right, so that, you gotta brush back.
Yeah, we had a camper, just keep track. Clearly, the camper's on the right of way. There's two campers.
Oh, yeah, the camper, the fences, I mean, almost all of their stuff is in, is in our right of way. Because the two roads go out around them, and they're like right in the middle, and most of their whole habitat is in our right of way.
So if the campers there more than 180 days, they need a zoning permit for that?
No, they're not, I don't think they're even living in, I don't think they're.
They are.
They are.
They are living in the one that's right by the road, not the other one?
The guy lives in that one.
Oh.
Well, they've got a big tent too. They've got a big tent there also.
Well, there's two kids.
Two kids?
There's two kids.
I think they have to be permanent structures before the zoning.
Well, there's still a pallet structure.
That accounts. Sure, sure.
Well, we, never mind, there's another, another zoning enforcement case that we went after somebody for living in a RV. But anyways. It's never easy. So if you, you know, maybe what I could do is give you a copy, make you, I've read this copy before, but a copy of the survey that shows where the roads are.
Okay, I've seen that.
Yeah, okay. So maybe we gave, showed them that.
Give them a date, say the road crew's coming on this date.
I can do that. Do you wanna pick a date?
Can I be a devil's advocate? Do we need two roads up there? Isn't the spur functional?
I've always thought, since we went through so much trouble to get the bypass approved and owned by the town, that that old one that it's replacing, you know.
Why worry about it?
Wow.
But the, but still, the other one is part of the snowmobile trail, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I don't think we should let people take over town roads.
Yeah, that's the other.
Like, it's such an opposite end.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Right, exactly.
I was just being devil's advocate, that's all.
Okay, then, go back.
I'll keep playing.
Okay, so where were we? That was why I put that in there, would be possible added clearing of the two short town roads. So you really wanna take that on again?
I mean, I'll go up and talk to them, I have no problem doing that. I don't know if I'll be releasing my breath or not, but it's worth a try, right? And if it makes sense for me to give them a date, like tell them the town road crew's gonna come such and such date, I can do that. I would just need a date.
Anytime before snow.
Okay, got it.
I mean, I can, I can, like I said, it's not a lot of time, machine time there, so anytime before snow, I can switch gears and make it happen.
Okay.
Fire base.
Fire base.
It's gonna snow.
But I would urge you to be careful.
Yeah, I might bring a friend.
Because there's been tension there.
Yeah.
For other reasons other than this, so.
Okay. I'll be cautious, I'm pretty, I'm not gonna come in causing people to be upset, hopefully.
You have a very nice way about you.
Thank you, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to use that. That's my plan, we'll see.
Yeah, my niece lives in Texas, they had baseball-sized hail today.
Wow.
So. Broke some windows.
Can I ask a little more about the other side of Old Poy Road? I was gonna email and then my, we completely fell apart. So the stuff that we had talked about?
Yes.
Did all that stuff get completed?
Yes, ma'am.
So I could tell, I could reach out to the people that were concerned and tell them that these things have been taken care of and hopefully that.
They know what's been done.
Okay.
I'm sure they've blocked it.
Yeah, I'm sure they have too.
But you can tell them that we've done what we're going to.
Yeah.
We actually put, we did some fixing on the class three part of Old Poy today. There was some washing remaining from the flood.
How far does that go?
How far does?
The class three portion?
Right to their house.
Oh, okay.
It stops right in front of their house.
Oh, okay.
And then it turns to class four. So they, they had complaints about the work that we did on the class four portion. And we have remedied some of those, some of those complaints. Whether it's to their satisfaction or not, I'm not sure, but I feel like we've made an attempt.
Yeah.
And I think that as far as maintenance on the road.
Yeah.
That's, it's all within those parameters. Incidentally, today, we actually took down their phone line, so actually it wasn't, it was very much an accident, but they may look at it differently. So we gotta deal, I gotta deal with that. I'm gonna call the phone company and have them, it crosses the road, and they're spreading gravel on the road.
Which they wanted.
Yeah. So anyway.
Did anybody mention to them, like, did somebody stop and knock on the door and tell them that the phone line got knocked in?
I don't think anybody was home.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
During the day, there was no vehicle in the yard.
Okay.
Usually they'll come out if they, you know, they're working, but didn't see anybody, so I'm assuming nobody was there.
Okay, cool.
But we're not equipped to fix telephone lines.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if we were, I would have just fixed it, but, you know, so that's the phone companies.
So we'll get another nasty email, you think?
I was thinking, we could nip it under.
Wifi on their telephone.
On their telephone?
They're gonna have to take a ride in order to.
Oh, right, yeah.
Oh, there are.
No, it's, whatever, it was an accident, and so an accident has to be fixed.
But when did they get home and get mad because nobody left them a note?
Well, I was thinking I could nip that in the bud, I was gonna reach out anyway, just to sort of close the loop with them.
It's happened today.
So I could use that opportunity to say, hey, by the way.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, yeah. Feel free to reach out to them.
Okay.
But, you know, we'll get it, we'll get it fixed. So.
So.
And then your next one is, should the inventory of the class four roads?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, there are some that we never go on, and we never use, and we wouldn't fix anyways. I don't know if there are any that we might be called on to fix that are, people live on. I think we would have probably heard them by now. I don't know.
Well, I think if you do one, you gotta do them all.
No. Some, a lot of them are just, like those two ones we were just talking about, they're, nobody uses them anyways.
Well, I can tell you for sure that people do use the Ho Chi Minh Trail, Woodbury Mountain Road.
And you went up there to Woodbury, to Slaton Pond Road?
So Tim has, I, I've been through since the flood, and I could go back through and like make notes of what spots are worse, what spots aren't. To me, I guess it would be kind of a matter of, like, if we think FEMA will pay, then yeah, we should get them fixed.
The Ho Chi Minh one?
Yeah, I mean, people use it.
It's worse than it was?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
People don't live on it, and we have never.
People that use those roads are people with off-road vehicles, and that's the main reason that they're trashed. So why should the town pay to fix them and just let them be the way they are? The town really should reclassify those roads as trails, where the town would remain on ownership, but they aren't responsible for maintaining. Because the Ho Chi Minh Trail is no longer, I mean, that would be thousands and thousands of dollars to repair in the shape that it is right now.
It wouldn't be a FEMA thing anyway, they only restored it to the way it was before the flood.
Right, so I'm not talking about trying to.
And have to prove that you've done the work.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm not talking about trying to fix them and make them like as good as Old Poy Road is. I'm, I guess what I was thinking was that if FEMA was willing to pay for damages that were caused in the flood, there were some significant damages to both those roads that made them worse than they were. They were already bad, but now they're like worse than they were.
Yeah, well, that would be FEMA eligible, that's actually, that part of it.
Well, for the class four, we looked into that when, when the Eagles ledge, Eagles ledge, Nichols ledge section was, was being considered, and were told that they will cover class four roads if the town has been maintaining those roads historically. So those other ones, like, I don't know, when we ever go up to Slaton Pond Road, certainly not the Woodbury Mountain Road.
The last time I was on the Slaton Pond Road was when Harry Daly was the road foreman, the Slaton Pond Road was when Harry Daly was the road foreman, we were actually, the regional planning commission was looking to do some class four, uh, model work for the beginning of the, um, municipal roads general permit. And to get through a major section of the road, we had, um, moes old side by side, and we were creeping along about two miles an hour to even progress on the road. It's in really bad shape, and I can imagine with the flood, with the culverts that weren't working at all, that that road is significantly more damaged than it was, but, um, but I don't really see where it makes sense for the town to repair those.
And they haven't, uh, we haven't heard from the landowner up there. The northeast Wilderness Trust. They haven't come to us complaining about anything. Probably like it that way.
They don't own the road, or they like it.
Yeah.
I don't think they really care if anyone ever goes up.
Wow.
So I'm gonna speak as the public, since everybody's kinda chipping.
Yeah, what the heck?
So my class four, um, which connects to Hattie Bell, um, Old Cabot Road, um, and then at the intersection, it connects to Hattie Bell. Um, last year, we, the road crew put in, um, two or three culverts. But our neighbor has had to dump in huge money, um, for washouts from that storm. So, yeah, I do think that, um, so.
So is that, you think that's one that would, would deserve to be maintained by the town? It has been maintained in the past?
Culverts are supposed to be maintained by the town.
Yeah.
On any class four.
Right.
So, yeah.
So you said that they were maintained. No, you said they were replaced by the town. Yeah, okay.
The town put in culverts.
So the town has been maintaining that road?
Yes.
Yeah.
As far as culverts and, yeah, ditching. So, yeah, I do believe that there are some class fours, and we've done culverts.
Yeah, I think we.
Class two, huge culvert extension.
Policy. We have to work on our policy so that we can determine which roads get, get what level of service and, and not.
Yeah.
Because obviously, in just in this five-minute conversation, we've got some roads that we probably don't wanna fix. But there are some roads where people live on, maybe we do need to fix a little bit or to whatever degree.
And we have.
So I think it's our policy is what we gotta work on, determine which roads are which.
We don't have time to do a policy now if we get a February, November.
No, I'm saying in the future, we'll have something to promote.
Something we always should.
Agenda for.
Michael?
Um, what Alfie is, I mean, the select board did discuss this back, when I was on the select board, which class four roads to maintain. Having a plan for maintenance, um, on different class four roads, which ones to perhaps give up, um, and just establish them as trails, um. You know, it's just, it was a huge can of worms and we never really took it on, but it, technically now, um, towns are responsible for culverts of bridges on class four roads and also for erosion. So, um, yeah, I think what Alfie is suggesting does need to be done, and, um, and it's.
I hate to say it, when I was on the select board, which was probably twenty years ago, at least, we talked, we talked about that too. Needing a class four road policy.
It's a tough issue. It's not, it's not a five-minute fix, but, you know.
There, there are some class, designated class four roads that are basically somebody's driveway, and one of them has a bridge on it, but the town did have to repair a number of years ago at considerable, you know, cost.
We're doing it again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody want, anybody want a list of all our town roads? I got some here.
Since we have a short window, you know, to figure out which ones we are gonna do maintenance to, what do you guys think? Like, how should we go about figuring that out?
Why don't you select the class four roads where people actually live on? And maintain those for, at least for emergency services' access to those structures. And Michael, do you have a statue or something that says the town has to install culverts, culverts, maintain?
It's in the orange book, yeah.
It's a standard statue.
It's in the orange book.
It's in the orange book?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if that's a statue, and we've been maintaining it historically for the orange book, then it should be covered by the.
Right.
So November second.
Maybe want to establish a committee to look at this issue and, and bring forth a proposal for a policy on class four roads? I don't think it's gonna get resolved in this.
I know, it's not, yeah.
Perhaps in a committee.
But the point was, my point on having this on the agenda was if we know of any, or we think of any that we need to identify before the November second, whatever. Now, Brandy has said that her road is a class four road that the town has maintained, and there's, what, two families accessing that?
Yes.
So absentee committee, can we have someone go, maybe a lister, where listers go through the parcels that exist on class four roads and determine who lives there, or if there are structures where people are living? And who better than the listers would know that?
We have any listers?
Well, the road crew's so busy.
I know, but.
Yeah, well, I, for example, I was looking at that today, and I was surprised to see that Mrs. Wagner's driveway is a class four road. I mean, that goes way up there.
Yes, it does.
And, but we haven't heard from her that there was any damage or anything, no.
I think the whole of Hattie Bell Road from Route fourteen up to Brandy's House, or that's still a class four road, designated as a class four.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we haven't heard about any damages on there. Have you been through there?
Are you referring to this end on Route fourteen?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, there's no road. There is no class four.
No.
There's nothing.
You mean it's washed out?
I mean, it hasn't been maintained, he did logging, there is no road.
Okay, so it's not.
But it's still on the town map.
It is. His driveway, going up his driveway into the woods. It's still a class four, but.
Yeah.
But it's not something that the town has worked on.
You can hardly find it logging, because there's so many different logging roads.
I tried going, really, my chief. There was trees down, there was, there was no way through.
So roads like that, that don't exist or aren't visible.
Right.
They should be taken off the map.
Yeah.
We're not held responsible for.
Right.
Right now, if somebody bought a chunk of land there, they could say, you have to fix it.
No, well, no, they'd have to fix it up themselves.
Right.
Yeah, if they wanted, yeah, they could fix it up themselves.
Has to put in culverts. The town is a bridge. The town is responsible for.
Well, then.
There's no culverts or bridges going up the hill up to the top of the ridge line where you, uh, it's, there's not, there's nothing that the town would need to maintain according to statute for a class four road, but it's, it's hard to tell where the road is that well, at this point.
Yeah, and discontinuing a road like that or maintain, or turning it into a trail is, is a process.
It's a process, right.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we, that Nichols Dam Road never got through the process. That's why it's still a town road, even though twenty-five years ago, the select board thought they were giving it away, but they didn't do the, do the process, so.
So if you find a list of, let's say, six class four roads that you wanna turn into trails, can you do that as a lump sum, or do you have to do each one individually?
I have a feeling you'd have to do each, because you have to, you have to notify all the landowners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The more, the more roads, the more landowners, the more, so everybody has to be noted by.
Yeah.
Michael, one through the, the Buck Lake Road one.
Right.
Yeah.
What's the effect, um, on the public's right-of-way? Like, I know that gets the town off the hook for having to maintain it, but, like, people like to recreate on the class four roads, and I think that's a huge asset to our town.
If they're designated as trails, they're still public right-of-way. The town still owns the, this section that's the right-of-way, and anybody can use it, but the town is freed of any maintenance of the, of the trail.
Is that the only change? Is it, the town's off the hook? There's no other?
J D T Bs, dirt bikes?
Yeah, any, anything.
Can still drive on it?
Anything, yeah. I know when we tried, we initially tried to make Ho Chi Minh Road, change it from a class four road to a trail, and there were a lot of people that came to the next meeting and quoted you, and we were very worried about that, and, um, and, uh, you know, we, you know, we just kind of left it alone, but that's what happens when it's a trail. It's still a town, town-owned, um, so there's always a possibility of making it into a class four road or a class three road in the future. If you totally discontinue it, then where the road was, the property reverts back to the landowners. So that's the advantage of keeping it as a trail, but it doesn't close off public, um, access to it unless the town passes an ordinance to to restrict that.
It's still sort of on the number of town maps and such.
Yeah.
Okay, well. Thank you all. Anything else, Alfie?
The road crew come up with a list of class four roads where people live?
Yeah. Yeah, and I can work on that too.
Sense of that, and, um, and maybe the town clerk and town treasurer knows who's, maybe we could come up with.
Taxpools are gonna, you know, they're gonna tell you whether they live here or they don't live here.
Yeah.
This is your second. It's good.
Resource would be the nine-one-one maps.
Yeah.
Cause it would show structures.
Now, here's one that's a possible problem is out here, well, we can talk about this later, Kips, the little stone bridge out there. That's a possible problem if that ever gave way. It, uh, the White House is right close to the road.
Across from, across from the merries.
Just beyond there, there's a, the town road goes into the woods and and there's a kind of a stone bridge there, that, uh, and, and it's a dam too, and it just keeps water back. I don't know whether to call it a bridge or a dam, but I guess it's a bridge and a dam.
Is that where the, just above, where the Kips used to live?
Yes, Kips, yeah. I just noticed it doesn't have a road name. It's, uh, Twenty-One Kips, it says on here.
And that connects up to the Pelces?
Nah, not, no, I don't think it goes up that far.
It doesn't go to the top of the mountain?
Nah, I don't think so. Not in, not on the maps that I've seen.
And that's, is that a class four road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so anyways, recovery officer.
Handouts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've got one for the chair. Do you want one handout? The rest are one.
Sorry, one, okay?
I only have one. So, what I've been working on the past two weeks, well, recent form of the damage inventories, and that's what you have? It's part of your project? Okay, so Alfie and I sat down last week, and since these were the first two, they took a little more time than I anticipated, but as we move forward, they should become easier to do, I guess. So you're looking at Blake Hill Road, and so, starting from the left, category D, which are emergency repairs. So Blake Hill Road, Woodbury, Vermont, oh, five, six, eight, one, so you have to determine latitude, longitude for where the damage took place, gotta do the description of the damage, how it happened, and the approximate cost, and percentage of work complete. And the labor type F A means simply that it's your town employees that are completing the work. So there, there has to be one of these for each road, not only for the emergency work, but also for the permanent work. So once the permanent work gets done, I'll sit down with Alfie, and there'll be three more entries on this, on this form with the same latitude, longitude, and there'll be more of a final cost for the permanent work, and so that'll happen maybe next week or the following week when Alfie's done with the permanent fix.
So if you have a road that has three different locations on it, do you have to fill one of those forms out for each one of those locations, or it's just one road?
One road, fortunately. So the second page, the way I determine the latitude, longitude is using the nine-one-one maps, because there's a layer in the map that'll give you latitude, longitude. So we, we were able to derive where the damages occurred and assign a latitude, longitude to it, which FEMA is required. So what I'll do is I'll submit this to FEMA along with the photographs, along with the map indicating latitude, longitude. Once they assign a project number, then you go to the next sheet in your package. And that's a force account labor summary, and that's by project number. So I just put in Alfie's name, and I just put in some fictitious hours that he worked, he may have worked it, but for this exercise, it's fictitious.
Just for discussion.
Hourly rate and benefits hours, so FEMA requires a loaded labor rate, so they need to, we needed to identify it, because hourly rate and his benefit, cost per hour, total hourly rate, and then we'll assign a total cost to it. But this is, whoever made this, this Excel spreadsheet out into a good job, because there should be formulas in here that'll allow you, once you add the hourly rate, the benefit rate per hour, the total hourly, hourly rate, they should be able to go back to these cells back here where the actual hours are, and just spit out a cost on the total cost. But it doesn't. It is pain.
Silly.
So you have to get out your calculator?
I do. And so I asked if I could modify this thing, and they said, don't touch it.
Oh, dear. Now, everybody will want it, if you figure out how to do it.
It's just locked in. You can't touch it.
That's crazy.
I know, so, and the same with the next sheet in your package. And what this is, is a force account equipment summary record. So every piece of equipment that's used, let's say in Blake Hill Road and the three repairs, you have to put in the size, capacity, horsepower, make and model of each piece of apparatus you use. Equipment code number, and none of our pieces of equipment in the town of Woodbury match any equipment code numbers in FEMA.
No kidding. Do we have horsepower? Did, you didn't write that, did you?
No, this is, these are all FEMA's.
H O U R S E P O W.
Yeah, so go figure that.
I won.
So I have to, I have to assign an equipment code to it, and you have to put in the operator's name, and then you assign the hours, and FEMA will assign an equipment rate, and then the calculator comes out, because this doesn't have any formulas in it either.
So you have to put it on there if it's a town piece of equipment, or if it's a rental piece of equipment?
No.
It'll be coded. It'll just be.
Yeah, so for the big excavator, there'll be a code for it.
Okay.
But the cost of the lease will be quantified in a different form. Go figure that.
Do you think B-Trans might have some of those equipment code numbers that?
Oh, these are, I have to go to FEMA and they'll assign it.
Okay.
They have a thirty-seven-page document, which I have one here somewhere. An illustration of that document.
So you just have to find something that sort of matches something that they have on their list?
Well, what I, what I'll have to do is send FEMA what we're using, and they'll assign an equipment.
Okay, oh, oh.
And lastly, there's a project worksheet, and this summarizes what you've done. So when everything else is done, you fill out a project worksheet, and work completed as a blah, 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 so you have to fill out this thing as well.
So what you're saying is you need a raise?
No.
I'm saying you deserve a raise.
He needs help first.
How do you double free?
Hey, we should just apply him for Saint Good or something.
I enjoy doing this stuff, believe it or not. So anyhow, we need these, this, this damage inventory, so hence, anything you can do to get the town offices damage inventory to me, if you're not going to have any insurance claims, you know, get it down to me quickly.
Okay.
Alfie and I have decided that Monday and Tuesday next week, tentatively, we'll shut up in that room in the town offices and go through.
We're gonna take the day off.
So anyhow, that's, that's.
A chair up against the door.
That's, in essence, the package that FEMA is looking for, for each. That's, in essence, the package that FEMA is looking for, for each road. So it'll be 16 of those packages.
You've identified 16 sites?
16 roads.
Oh, yeah.
16 roads, and, you know, the park here, we should be able to quantify the cost of that.
Oh, yeah, that's another, where did I have that?
Yeah, that's, that's a, it's a different category. I forget what category it is. So what else have I been doing? So we did Lake Hill Road, we've done Woodbury Road, and I think Woodbury Road's complete, because the permanent fix is done.
Well, we've got, we've still got two landslides.
It's not done.
Those are, those are the two that I showed, uh, to Lenny.
Okay.
And so, I don't know where that information is, where that process falls in, but there, you know, he said they were gonna schedule another meeting to, for me to show him more sites, but I haven't, we haven't heard, I haven't heard.
Okay.
So that's something that, you know, in the, in the sense of our, our deadline, we should get him back here to get some...
I have a conference call with the project manager, so, Lenny.
Either Lenny or, or somebody else, you know, I mean. I like Lenny a lot, but...
I do, too.
Took a long time to do what we did.
Okay. So what else have I been up to? Completed the loaded labor rates, and we utilized Dave Pike, and he's a part-timer, so he has no benefits, so his, his time is pretty simple. Mike, I had a question updated in the town offices, which Robin and Brandy, you've given already, we're still waiting for something from...
The LCT.
The LCT.
The claim.
Yeah. Yeah, work on the town park, and that's called the Schedule G, because any work you do on parks is a different schedule from roads or structures.
So my question about that, this park over here, the north park, how do we get that gravel scraped off? I don't know, that tree might already be dead, but maybe not, the apple tree. It's all surrounded by, you know, gravelly and silty stuff. I mean, you're not gonna go in there with your, one of your pieces of big equipment.
Uh, certainly not the big excavator that we rented.
No. I mean, you know, like a power shovel or something?
Rake hands or something like that. A rake hand.
A rake, yeah.
We've got some volunteers, I got wheelbarrows and shovels.
That's how we get the post office lawn.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, or a skid steer, skid steer would, would do a nice job.
Uh-huh.
Because it's smaller.
Who has one of those? Is that what you use?
A lot of people.
No, we use rake hands.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Muscle.
Uh, I have one personally, you can rent them, um, there are other contractors that have them. Tell me what to do, and I'll make it happen. Um, yeah, I mean, when I was back there, cleaned up the bulk of that debris, I had the big excavator, so, you know, it does a lot of work fast, but it doesn't do good with fine...
Yeah, and it digs in, I mean, you don't want it to dig in.
Yeah, you'd be digging all the topsoil and it'd be...
Yeah.
So, if that's something the board wants me to put higher on the agenda, then I...
Well, is it gonna, is something like that, a skip gonna qualify because it's small?
It's a park.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll qualify.
What?
It will qualify.
It will qualify, but it's not $3,500 or whatever it is that they...
Just a different schedule, that's all.
It'll be fine.
Okay, Mike?
Could you hire the property management people that do the mowing to do that?
I don't know if they have that kind of equipment.
I don't know. We'll have to look into DR, yeah.
I'm sure they'd be happy.
Yeah.
But, uh, so is that the kind of little, like, bobcat kind of thing that you're talking about? We don't have one of those in town anymore?
Ron Landman does.
Well, I thought he was gone. No, I mean, I haven't seen it in his place. Is it up at Chuck's or something?
Oh, it's in his garage.
I could probably find a key for it. If you get me in the garage, I can get it.
Yeah, so...
No, there's, many people have them. I'm sure Russell Richardson probably has.
Oh, okay, oh.
And then a farm trac, small farm tractor would probably, you know, there's still gonna be some handwork, for sure, but having a machine there to get the heaviest of it would definitely be feasible.
Yeah.
So if somebody else is doing it, where, where does the town want to fill, put?
That's what I was thinking.
Uh, I would be happy to help them with that, whenever, you know, if they can just get it scraped up, I can bring the loader, and scoop it up and load it, I can find places to put it, for sure, yeah.
You wanna ask Ronnie?
That's a select board.
No, I'm asking, the select board is asking you if that is somebody you, you think might be interested in doing that work.
Yeah, I'm sure he would. I can look into DR, because if there is gonna be manual, manual...
I think, I think if we, I think we should try with DR, seeing they're the ones that mow it.
Mow it, maintain it.
They're gonna bring it back to the, to the quality that they wanna run their mowers over.
Oh, okay.
Maybe they would be...
Maybe they have something like that.
Yeah, try them and see if not, then again, there's, there's a bunch of them, there's a lot of people that would have, I mean, that's landscaping, so...
Yeah, that's just it, if there's gonna be legwork also, that we want somebody to do the complete job.
Can we talk with them?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you get, if you...
Oh, I was asking if we could talk with the DR people.
Oh, okay.
The other good thing about hiring a contractor is, it's just an invoice, skip puts the invoice on.
Right, right, exactly.
You don't have to do one of these?
Not, right, exactly.
Oh, you will.
Oh, you do?
Oh, sure.
Still have to, but it's less.
I'll bundle that with the, you said that's the north park?
Right.
How about the south park?
That's one, the, V-Trans is gonna put that back together, they say, when we're done, and I asked them, if they end up having to put a guardrail all the way to the power pole, we're not gonna be able to get into that half of our park, so maybe we could ask for some extra money to build a little bridge. But anyway, they said we'll talk about that afterwards, which is fine. Yeah, that's not something that FEMA would be involved.
So, moving on.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I have more, but wait. So I requested and received, uh, an estimate for the speed sign that I'm sure...
To book for the what?
Speed sign, done by...
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
So I got a quote for that, and that's just for the material, and I've reached out to Lafayette Construction, those are the folks who installed the quote, ah, excuse me, who installed the, uh, speed sign, so I'm waiting for a quote on that.
Wait, did something happen to one of those speed signs?
Yeah, I hear the flood took it out, flood ate it.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
The state actually put the post back up.
I don't know why.
But, uh, well, because they were working on the bridge, it was right next to their bridge, so they just kinda did it all as they're, as they were doing it.
So the post is still probably good?
Did someone take that away? I noticed the solar panel wasn't there.
Uh, it was there...
It's pointing in a different direction, isn't it?
Last week it was there. The solar panel's down, was down on the ground.
It's broken, isn't it?
I'm sure it's, yeah, it was underwater, I'm sure it's not functional. So the quote just means, the post is fine, the post and the danger is fine, it's just the, the sign itself.
And the solar, regrettably, they don't make that product anymore, so we'll have to, oh boy, get an upgrade, so anyhow.
Well, thank you for taking care of that, because I was thinking it would be the one, because you probably ordered the last time around, right?
I did.
Yeah, and the lady who, um, is emailing me again, the one who was involved in this speed, the whole conversation with the sheriff's department last year, she started emailing me about when is that sign gonna go back up, and I am, no idea. So now I do, working on it.
Well, I'll have to turn it by the select board to see if they want to purchase it.
Well, I think we do. Well, I mean...
Once I get the, once I get both quotes...
I mean, it's a FEMA thing, right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but, still need the select board's permission to purchase it.
Oh, okay.
I'm not gonna go up and say, "Yeah, you know, drop it off at my door."
We're getting quotes on it, though.
Everybody should have one of those.
So the select board's gonna have to approve it, so once I get both quotes in...
Okay.
Then I'll send it to the board. But I will, what I will do is put out an estimated cost for it, and if the select board chooses to act or not, up to you guys.
Do you have an estimate yet?
I have an estimate for the sign and solar panel, but not the install cost.
Okay.
The two separate companies that do that. And we'll have to get another permit from V-Trans to work in their road. Who was that guy I worked with, remember him?
I can't remember the guy, I use it.
Probably Don.
He's gone. So I'm going to have to sit down with Brandy soon. She gave me a detailed transactions report, and it's great, it shows an expenditure of $56,353.60 as of September 11th for description highway materials, and I'm presuming this is all FEMA stuff. And there's something from the farmyard store.
Yep.
That's for like $5,400, that for eggs.
Culverts, I'm assuming.
Johnson Hardware culverts?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
I'll have, yes, we'll have copies of all of those, and the checks.
Yeah, so I'll have to...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll have to do that.
The list has, has grown since then, but yeah.
Sure. And that's all I have.
I have something, that's part of yours, actually, Skip, um, the town hall foundation damage, so I went in there Sunday after I went to your house, um, and I really explored, and I didn't see any damage at all. It's wet, like, the ground is really wet, but I assume that the water table is probably still really high. Um, but all the sonotubes looked fine to me, all the foundation looked fine, um, it actually was really nice under there, there was like no rot, I didn't see any evidence of powder post beetles, which was in that, remember we had that, like, report? I didn't see anything like that, so I personally thought it was in amazing shape.
It's really cool under there.
It's really dirty under there.
But those beams are like, really impressive. I can't say it really went under, but it stuck my head under. Okay, great, so thank you for noticing that that was still on there, so I guess we don't have to put anything in there.
I mean, I don't seem to be a foundation expert by any means, but...
Well, but it's just bears.
There was nothing, yeah, they weren't undermined, there was no damage that was visible at all.
Um, I, we have a visitor, and I have a feeling he's Josh Corn, our health officer, and I think he was, came, did you talk to him about talking about...
We emailed, yeah, yeah.
You think we have enough to keep him here, or are you being interested enough to stay?
Well, I just wanted to get some background on the things I had emailed about, and I know that Lizzy's kinda new to the select board, like, I'm new, and so I don't know that she has a whole lot of contacts, but it would be great to connect with, with you about some things, um, and just kinda understanding some of those issues I emailed about.
Okay.
Is that an executive session discussion?
I think it has to be.
That's kinda what I guess.
Okay, all right, okay, well, thank you for being here, and we'll get to you soon. Norm?
Yeah, um, okay, so, let's see, I did attend part of the emergency management conference, one interesting point that they made is that when the meteorologist spoke from Burlington, that we saw 40% hurricane season left, and that a four-inch rainfall now is equivalent to a normal six-inch rainfall because of, the ground's still so saturated, which means we're at higher risk of bombs than, um, and when I found the other hurricanes, so that, all that's in play, and I just thought I'd throw that out to you for entertainment, but, yeah, but it, it does remind us that, that we need to be prepared for what's may come, but the, um, so, moving right along, we talked about radios, I did get a written estimate from Radio North for $3,973 to do that installation.
Radio North, you said?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll leave you a copy of that if you want, quotation. The procurement policy is something that's got figured out, too, in terms of, well, you wanna, let's guess, how is that...
Thank you.
The, uh, I did also, their problem is they're swamped, and that also has to do with the town radios on the trucks, getting able to get to see them, so I did also contact Burlington Communications, they're another, larger outfit, much larger outfit, that does this kind of work, and, especially because we're doing this as an emergency repair kind of thing, you should really consider that, they're about two weeks out, they said, so...
Two weeks out to get an estimate, or?
No, two weeks out to come check out the radio, town radios, and/or, and/or to do this installation, if they're, if they get a go-ahead, I haven't sought to get a price from them yet, because I thought I'd bring it to this meeting and see what you thought should happen next with this, because in your court.
Well, we have one member who's not here, who seemed to think that the, we have to go out to bid for anything over $3,000, and I still don't know where he got that.
I talked to the state purchasing department, and they said they have not changed theirs, it's still the, the $8,000.
Hmm, the $8,000 is our policy, so, yeah, you couldn't find it, so...
So, do you wanna get a quote from them, too, and see how it compares to the other price, and just make the decision, or do you wanna empower someone to go forward with this, if the price is somewhere another, what do you wanna do?
Good question.
Yeah, good question. I think we should, I mean, Chris seemed to feel strongly about it, I think we should wait until...
Okay. Next question, um, the, there's a bunch of things for preparing this that we've talked about somewhat, um, additional road, additional road signs, um, the, I don't know how, what kind of priority you think that has, and some of that might be included on the FEMA stuff, what do you think, Skip, getting some additional road signs, um...
You mean like for construction, and...
Yeah, road closed and so forth.
Road closed, or outdoors, or, yeah. I don't know, they're hard to buy water, if they allow for that, or...
They do. It's part of the emergency work.
If we get through the emergency without it...
Right, I'm wondering, the emergency's over now, can we still buy signs for future emergencies?
How much, how much money are you talking?
Uh, well, we had a quote, right, uh, I wanna say...
Sometime ago, I don't know.
Yeah, like $6,000. Well, it was a bunch of cones and a bunch of signs.
Is that quote still good? Is it good for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
I think it was 30.
Well, that was put under the state contract, the quote we got was off the state contract.
Well, I would say go up and purchase it, and I'll just put it in as a, as a cost. Yeah.
I, I just, my hesitancy is, is we just got informed that we're $78,000 in the red, so...
Don't even, don't worry, taxes to make up for that. It was negative before you even came in, don't even take it personal, don't...
Well, yes, but I, you know...
Isn't that like you've been spending...
I budget at home, so, and I'm responsible for this budget, so I have to...
Well, no, you came into this when it was already in the hole, so...
Right, so, but I mean, you know, figuring that FEMA's gonna reimburse us, I mean, I do think those signs would be helpful in another event, such as we just went through.
And they also could be just supplies that you buy to have on hand for the...
Right.
Or about sandbags.
What about sandbags?
I bought sandbags. I've got a hundred of them.
Send me the quote.
They told me not to.
It's already in there.
This, it's kinda interesting. Sandbags have a shelf life.
Oh, no.
Really?
Yes. So he says, don't fill them with sand until you're ready to use them.
Uh-huh.
Cause when you use them, you'll pick them up and the sand will hit the ground and the bag will be in your hand. The bottom of it deteriorates and it. So I have them on hand. I have a hundred of them. If, if we have an event, people can come get them. Volunteers can fill them with sand. We've always got sand, plenty of sand, so that's, we're ready for, for that.
So it sounds like even if they're not filled, they stood, they still could rot? Is that what they're saying? When you say it's shelf life?
I think it's the, the moisture from the sand.
Oh, okay, once they're filled, okay, thank you.
It's kind of a woven plastic, you know, so I think they're in a box, so they're, if they're gone, they're kept dry in the shop there.
Right.
They'll be ready for us. So I can send that to Skip, the quote, and.
Do you mean, do you think you need six thousand dollars worth of?
Um. Maybe not. I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, you have to store them and, I don't know, you know, and.
I mean, Norm got the quote and I think you and I talked a little bit about what to put into that. But I don't remember, you know, like how many signs there was. I know it was like fifty cones or something like that. It was a pretty absorbent amount. Um, but in an event like we just had.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, we could've used them.
I mean, I used everything that was at my disposal at the town garage. Everything was out.
And then you needed more.
And I could've, easily could've used more, you know. There were some places that weren't marked properly during that storm.
Yeah, so, so that's the, you know, was necessary. And, and at the time, when I, while we talked about it, like I submitted that, I contacted the state and they, they said we'd have them for you the next day and you're just putting for FEMA reimbursement, what they said. Um, but it, but you, well, you got some at the time, right? You got some cones?
I got some, some cones, yeah, just to have on hand. I bought ten cones.
Uh, okay.
But I, I'll go back to that quote and, uh, evaluate it. Maybe, maybe we don't need the whole thing, but.
Yeah, well, I made a, it's good figure when you put it in.
Well, let's skip aside, how's that?
Hmm?
Well, let's skip aside.
The what?
How much room do you have to store this stuff? Well, like go in the Conex box?
Conex box. I have an ample room for that.
Yeah.
I mean, even for the, the lights, I mean, on Cabot Road with that landslide.
Yeah.
I mean, it would've been.
Well, yeah, we have a lot of people driving at night and when it's raining, you know, it's hard to see. It's hard to, you know, so, uh, I think it would be.
Can the select board approve that and make a motion that, with, between Norm and?
Send it to Skip.
No. Between what, Norm and?
Wouldn't that be the same, the same as the, don't have to follow the.
The select board will have to approve.
But you, you buy stuff all the time.
It's individual. It's not, even though it's one clump, it's not that you're, you're handing over construction job for eight thousand. It's not something we have to go out to bid for. Is that what you were going for?
That's what I was, that's my question.
No.
Because Chris is saying last week that it was three thousand dollars is our limit without going to bid.
But this is not a project.
So just for my clarity, clarity, I need to know, does that mean for any, any purchase?
No, we buy culverts and.
I mean, I have a budget that I'm responsible for.
Yeah.
Do I have authority to buy anything within that budget?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if you get a budget for a truck that was ordered and all approved and you buy culverts and you don't have to go out to bid for culverts and you buy other supplies, whatever you need for the garage, and I think you can just put it down as supplies.
Yeah, well, that, that particular transaction is brought off the state contract and I was state close to bid for those contracts.
Oh, okay, well then.
So the bidding is already done.
The bidding's already done.
Okay, well, that's.
I know in other menus, if you can, if you buy under those contracts, then you've complied with the bidding rules. But I don't know how that deals with the town's procurement policy.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But, uh, and they may wanna modify.
Future agenda.
Buy what you need.
They may wanna modify it to specifically allow for buying on the state contract or on the state contract.
They might say something like that in there.
Already pre-bid and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot easier if you can buy under the contract, but you might be able to get a better price elsewhere, but that's, that's work's been done.
So I'll just order them. I'll just order them, the cones.
Yeah, we said.
Just send me the invoice.
I'll give you the invoice and check number.
There we go.
Picture of some big picture.
So in terms of mitigation issues, um, the, uh, there are three basic categories of significant costs that we know about. Um, one is to replace more culverts and bring them off the standard. Another is there are sections of town roads that flood, um, like, you know, nearby lake or wetlands, you know, disoverflows or I'm not talking about streams flooding them, but just, just the level of water. Um, and another one that's upcoming is, uh, you know, first we need to get the, the, the truck radios serviced to see if they're operating correctly, because right now, corny off here, they're basically no good. And then they may need to be replaced with better radios.
So did you get that, uh, thing up at the quarry fixed? The, uh, sealer or what?
As far as I know, um, I think my guy kinda dropped the ball here, so. I, I'm either gonna harass him or we're, like, like Norm said, we're gonna go on to another contractor.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, Radio North told me that they're down two techs and they have no shortage of work. I mean, that, that they can't get to, so, um, maybe we need to, you know, see if we can get some better service somewhere, because these things should happen, then putting them off doesn't help.
Hmm.
I, you know, they may be pricier because of their outfit, um, and obviously like using Radio North for, cause there's experience with them, but, uh, but we need to get the work done.
So this is, I mean, you're talking about new radios for the trucks or?
Well, no, there's two separate things.
Okay, okay.
One is, uh, we need to get in service to see if they'd work okay.
Oh, right, okay.
If everything was put together right, and maybe they don't need to get replaced. We don't know that.
Okay.
But, um, but we need, we need to have decent radios and the trucks that work.
Yeah.
So.
Who does the fire department use for their radios?
Radio North. So, it, um, so, uh, these bigger projects I didn't talk about, you know, I'm talking about, um, needing to upgrade all the culverts that need upgrading essentially. Um, and dealing with sections of road that need up, upgrading for resiliency and so on. So looking at, you know, where's the money we could access for this? And I put out a couple of things to you folks that I came across and, um, researching others. Uh, there's a scheduled, there's a show the money guy that the state puts out, state V-Trans, um, that kind of this, all these things, which is good. I can, I can email you folks the.
What did you say? Show the money?
Show the money is what they call it.
I thought that's what you said.
Well, you know, it's not my, my, it was a buzzword, I'm, yeah. And, um, the schedule deal asked about the sixty thousand, this is all, um, but all these programs are at an eighty-twenty split, eighty percent federal, state, twenty percent town. So I'm not, I'm not done researching all this stuff yet, certainly. And, uh, so I'm gonna, you know, check into that further and maybe next meeting be able to come back with some, something more intelligent about suggestions on applying for something, but the town's gonna have to decide if they can spend the twenty percent. Cause altogether, you know, we're talking about a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars or something to get this work done. That should happen. And, um, and if, uh, FEMA has some programs and, and the work would be two years out. So some of these other programs would happen quicker. They, um, all these things have their pluses and minuses. And I probably should remind you that I'm getting done in about a month. Um, I signed on for three months. Luckily, we have someone that is willing to, uh, do the job. John Gordon's here. I'll let him speak for himself in terms of his interest in the position. So the select board, how you wanna handle this, but that's your entry.
I still haven't raised his hand.
I don't have a lot to say other than I'm willing to step in for Norm when he's done.
That's really awesome. Thank you.
Make a motion that we appoint, um.
That's your job, right?
John Gordon to be the, to take over as emergency management director when Norm is.
Tomorrow.
No, no.
Say about a month.
November first.
What, what's your last day? Seventeenth?
October seventeenth.
Oh, geez.
I thought this was a more or less kinda three months.
No, this is right in the middle.
So I guess, uh, eighteenth then?
No.
Could I introduce a motion?
Please.
Swear.
That should replace the FEMA point.
Did he what? No, you signed on for eighteen months, I think it was.
Well, good luck with your eighteenth. Um, so the, uh, and that, that also goes all the way around to setting up, you know, dealing with updating the mitigation plan and putting together some kind of committee. Uh, if you, if, if John's gonna take over, you would be a key person to be involved in that. Um, I think it's one process really that involves both emergency management as well as planning commissioners overlapping to work out collaboratively on that would be a good idea.
Would you be on the committee?
Perhaps.
What?
Perhaps.
Perhaps?
Perhaps.
Perhaps?
He did say crap.
It's only your interpretation. I know what I said, but no, perhaps.
No.
So do we need to make it official? I, I heard two motions that we haven't really finished.
Um, yeah, his motion was for something else. He wants to, he wishes he'd signed on for three months, but he didn't, so a couple longer. So, yeah, what do you think?
Okay, I will make a motion, um, to appoint John as the emergency management director once Norm is done.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and give us your pay, Skip, pay requirement.
Speaking of that pay requirements, so I have potentially someone who may want to assist me.
Hmm.
But that person is in a position that they would like to get paid.
Uh-huh.
So, uh, and.
That's female eligible.
Pardon me?
That's female eligible.
That's, that is female eligible. And so that person going rate is, is at a discount for what that person does.
Yeah.
So, uh, that person would like to be reimbursed fifty dollars an hour. Yeah, and that's, that's okay, I think.
How many hours a week do you think they'd be putting in?
Well. Probably for this initial go-around, I'm thinking probably a total of forty hours. You know, because right now I have spreadsheets set up, so what you basically have to do is sit down with the road crew, get their narrative and the cost of material, the labor, plug it into a spreadsheet and out it comes. And then it's, I shouldn't say merely filling out forms, it's filling out forms.
Hmm.
And, uh, so I anticipate forty, maybe sixty hours.
A week or total?
Total.
Total, okay. So sixty a week, that's a long week.
So this is.
So, so anyhow, and FEMA will reimburse up to five percent of the total project cost. So Woodbury's total expenditures for this FEMA disaster is approaching three hundred thousand dollars. So five percent of that would be fifteen grand. So FEMA for this category Z work, which is administrative, it would be a check sent through the state to Brandy for category Z work, okay, totaling, say fifteen thousand dollars. And then the select board would authorize payment to that person for the amount of time that that person put in.
Hmm.
And all that time is included, volunteer time is included in that schedule Z.
Right, yeah, I've been trying to keep track of a few things.
And county clerk's time that's spent on, on this work is part of schedule Z and treasure as well.
And all these, all these times, all category Z as well for filling out these forms. So it's up to the board to decide if you want to.
I know some, I'm just thinking of some of the responses that we got when the, uh, there was a new delinquent tax collector hired.
Well, this is totally different from that.
Okay, but people are gonna say.
Can I ask you, Skip, I know what you're doing.
Doing to do this and it's the law for one person to.
Yeah, but they might, but there might be other people who.
This is different from the delinquent tax collector. That was a percentage issue of the delinquent taxes.
Well, I mean, the issue was that the, was, the amount was more than most people make. So at the time, so there was some pushback about, but.
This is short term and it's.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so I know what you're doing is quite specialized. I can tell by like reading your reports and stuff. Um, what this person would be doing, who would be working with you, do they need specialized knowledge? I, I'm just wondering.
This person does.
He does, yeah.
Okay, so it's not something that someone could come along and be trained in relatively quickly and do for possibly a lower rate of pay?
This person is expert in spreadsheets.
Mm-hmm.
And accounting. So albeit she's not expert in FEMA.
Uh-huh.
Who is?
Hmm.
So this person could hit the ground running, so it's good. But it would be up to the select board again to decide whether or not, when the money starts flowing in, to cut this person a check for the time they've spent on the project.
Mm-hmm.
Up to the select board again.
So that's why I'm making a lot of decisions today, right?
Like, like now or?
Well, we've got deadlines. We've got deadlines.
Until November, November second.
When would the, when would the, this kind of work be done?
Before November second.
Okay.
Like next Monday, I'd be saying?
I'm gonna make a motion to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I should say it in a more official way. I'm gonna make a motion to offer this person fifty dollars an hour for up to sixty hours worth of work, but probably not more than that.
I need to put a cap line.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. If you want to put enough to exceed a month, that's fine.
Um.
And they can revise it later.
Yeah.
Maybe we could just talk about it if it seems like it's gonna go way over that.
Or if FEMA puts up any more hoops.
Uh-huh, so this wouldn't be, I would add them to payroll, pay them.
Absolutely not.
Oh, no, oh, okay.
There's no payroll.
Okay.
She's a contractor. Right, well, she'll be a contractor.
Oh.
No.
No, because.
She would.
So she wouldn't get paid until we got paid?
Yeah, she would be, uh. Oh, yeah.
She'd be a contractor.
She would be a contractor.
Long contract, contractor without a contract.
There's no, there's no town money moving.
No W, okay, gotcha.
Oh, okay.
None whatsoever.
No.
Maybe a couple of sheets of paper and a pencil, that's about all.
They shouldn't pay, they shouldn't pay, or it goes in as an expense and.
Say that again?
Well, I should leave, leave that. You would think she submitted an invoice and got paid and then got reimbursed by FEMA, same as every other contractor. I'd say how else are you gonna do it?
On good faith?
Yeah.
Maybe not.
No, it would, yeah.
Before you go, you, are you trying to leave?
Yeah.
Just let me read this. This is on, this is from our purchasing policy. Section five, cases not requiring bidding procedures. One is, uh, the employee, elected official or committee chair may approve a purchase order without bid under the following conditions. One, A, item is to be purchased under town, state, or federal bid contract. So, there you go. The other thing, then there's only one source of purchase, no comparable substitute, or a specific type of brand of supply or part necessary for acceptable operation of a machine, or an item of service, or item or service that is required on an emergency basis. And then there's several emergency procedures here, and an item previously awarded by a bid process within the past six months. So anyways, that answers. I have one question about buying under the state contract.
Well, the state contract and also emergency procedures, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we've, you know, this isn't a, if an incident happened tomorrow and it could be something other than a flood, because we're gonna have some nice weather for change.
Yeah.
We're still in the same position of not being able to communicate. And we're still in the same position of not being able to communicate and so forth. And, you know, so, this is in, certainly in the category of emergency repairs, as was, as is the intended, looking to apply to FEMA as part of the emergency for this stuff, because right now, the emergency operations center is not viable. And we need to have the, this room set up to be able to operate, and that's where that lies.
So, under the emergency procurement section, emergency procurement's definition. Emergency procurements may be made when there is a threat to public health, welfare, or safety, provided that such emergency procurement shall be made with such competition as is practical under the circumstances. Examples of emergency procurement include repair of storm damage, infrastructure requiring immediately repaired, structural repairs to municipal buildings that would otherwise cause the building to be closed.
Yeah, those are examples. Yeah, so those are examples, and they're not...
Yeah, they're not really.
Saying that those are the only things.
Right, right. The case of an emergency requiring emergency, immediate purchase of materials, supplies, or...
I know the emergency operations, people from the state consider that they had an emergency.
Yeah. What do you think?
Did you mention, Norm, I thought I heard you say something about getting a second quote for that?
Yeah.
How, you have any idea of the timeframe for doing that?
I've got, I have to call them back. No, you said that they can get to doing the work in a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay. These people can, or the other people you talked to?
The new people, the Burlington outfit.
But Radio North is already somebody that the town is dealing with in the fire department?
Yeah.
So, that seems like it would make more sense to go with them.
But I thought you said they couldn't get here.
Oh, and the other company is not a couple of months out?
They said a couple of weeks.
Oh.
And now, probably doesn't have operable radius.
Yeah.
We should probably compare the pricing a little bit.
And there's two different things. The repair on radios, you know, my suggestion is that we get them and check out the radios. I think that's really your call, because that's entirely your province to have a discussion and see if that works.
Right. So, I'll call, I'll call my guy tomorrow and just see where he's at. If he's too busy, then I'll...
Sure.
I'll go with, yeah. And if a radio guy can come and it can do the whole thing in one day, or whatever, or two days, whatever it takes, and it's done, then that's, that's my idea of a good time. Get it done.
Yeah, I'll ask the Burlington folks to get their quotation we have, the other one. So, they'll have two to look at. And then, you know, I guess, there's no way to get this moved along quicker than your next meeting from what you've said before, so that's how it'll happen.
Well, okay, or if there is a rush, could we, like, vote to go with whichever one? Could we empower you to make the decision, so you don't have to wait two weeks? I don't know if that's a, if that's a new...
You could.
Good?
Yeah, you could if you chose to, and you go to boss.
Can it wait two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, um...
As long as the hurricane don't come.
Right. I don't think we'll ever have another flood like this, ever.
Oh, yeah.
I know we said that in 2017. Don't remember a flood like this.
It's hard to remember.
Our whole house, half of our, yeah.
But I think that, you know, this last one is a, is an example of something that we need to be better positioned for. I don't know that we could ever get to be 100% where no road's gonna get damaged no matter how much work you did because of that, but we weren't as well positioned as we like to be, and we want to get there. I tried to leave once, but company at home leaving tomorrow.
So, you're gonna, so I guess we're gonna leave it that you're gonna try and get this quote from this other company that's only two weeks out?
Yeah, I'll still get a quote and go back to the next meeting unless you want to empower me to, uh, having come, you know, proceed to do the work.
Okay.
What do you think, Dana?
Yep. Just one more question. Did you guys ever vote on whether or not this person should be hired?
No, we should do that, though. I made a motion. Can...
I think we can.
I just made a motion, but I didn't quite finish.
Okay, all right, all right.
So, Norm brought out a good point. Instead of having this person come in and waiting for FEMA reimbursement, which we know we're going to get, if we could pay this person as this person works, like on a weekly basis as a consultant?
Is that what she wants?
Most consultants submit it every...
He or she wants?
Every couple of weeks.
Well, I'll find out. But in the event that this is what this person wants to do, would the select board entertain them?
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
We know we're gonna reimburse...
She has to submit a bill.
We bought all the gravel. We paid for it now, and then we get reimbursed.
If she wants to submit a bill every two weeks, or once a month, or whatever, I think you should be able to look that out.
So, that should also be part of your...
My motion? Do you want me to do it right now?
Yes, go ahead. Let me write it down.
This is the first day I've made an emotion, surprise. So, I'm gonna make a motion to hire this person that Skip knows as a consultant, and to pay her as she works and be reimbursed, reimbursed by FEMA.
So, for your motion, we probably should have a name. Can we use a name? It's not secret, right?
You know, last conversation with this person, she was kind of on the edge.
Okay.
On whether or not she...
But you didn't identify her just anyone.
Well, oh, no. It would be only, it would be only this person.
Okay, all right, so...
This person is eminently qualified.
The person, the person.
Yeah.
And the capital, don't you?
Yeah, and I suppose I, you know...
Capit?
She wouldn't mind. It's Danielle Livalera?
I thought it was. I mean, secretly, no, I'm not sure.
Yeah, me too, so...
Yeah, and she was at the FEMA meeting, and, you know, she was engaged in the FEMA. You know, she added a lot to the meeting. And, but, you know, she's a little apprehensive because she doesn't know a lot about FEMA and their forms. And so, but I think if we tell her that a motion was passed, that she could have paid her rate.
Thank you.
Good.
I think she would go for it.
Okay.
Okay. And that's the only person that I would push forward to the select board to do this type of work.
Okay.
Should we vote on the motion? Do I need to reword it?
Well, the motion to hire Danielle Livalera and to pay her what she's asking for...
$50 an hour?
Up to...
Up to 60 hours, and maybe we can talk about more if it's needed.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I'll reach out to her tomorrow and see if she's interested in how to do it. She may not.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it's you and me. Well, that would be lovely. I can't wait to be shut up in a room with FEMA for a week.
When's your next FEMA meeting?
I have a conference call on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And I'm going to the fire department FEMA meeting, because the same project manager will be there.
Is that Michelle?
Michelle.
Yeah.
I sent you an email of who she is.
Yeah, I got the name, so I put it in the minutes.
She goes by Michelle.
Yeah, that's her, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, Josh, we've been waiting a while.
Yes, I know, no.
So, can executive session?
Okay, so, did we have anything else? We got nothing on Nichols Dam Road. Okay, so, let's, uh, make a motion that we go into an executive session to discuss various enforcement problems.
I'll check it out.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.